Okay, here we go. I call the special meeting.
I call the special meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for June 30th, 2020. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Here.
Bona, here.
Harpen?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
LaForest?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Lamb is here.
Oh.
Here.
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 We have a forum. Please stand for a moment of silence remembering Barbara Cheeseborough, a 28-year-old, a 28-year mathematics teacher at the Cannon Technical High School and Richard Gabby Gibson, who are then a cemetery department employee. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I hope one day we will be able to recite that in unison in the same room. I don't know when that's going to happen though. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Adams City Council is being conducted both remotely and in person with city councilors. However, the public are not attended in person in city council chambers. This meeting can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station and will be posted to its website as soon as possible. You'll notice that there is a hybrid assortment tonight. Some city councilors have chosen to be in council chambers. Some city councilors have chosen to participate remotely, which is certainly their choice and their right. We have continued to experiment to find the best way to allow councilors to be in chambers, which was their preference, and also to allow for public input. We do have allowance for hearing of visitors tonight. I would request that anyone wishing to speak use both their first and last names in their profile. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand.
Yes, sir. Take your name and address for the record, please. You're muted right now.
You're muted right now, sir. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Trevor Gilman. I just wanted to, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place, but because there aren't finance committee meetings for this year's budget, I just wanted to take the opportunity to bring up the hydrant situation in the West End.
Okay, actually, at this, I'm sorry, at this point in the meeting, we would ask you to speak only to the budget because that is our agenda item. We will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting for you to talk about other topics.
Okay, well, my point was that I just wanted to make sure that the budget addressed the shortfalls for the water department saying there wasn't money to fix the hydrant. I was told at last year's finance committee meeting that it would be addressed in the West End last summer, and that never took place. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to bring that up while you were discussing the budget.
Okay, indeed, it's relevant to the discussion tonight. All right. Thank you, thank you for your input. If any other attendees wish to speak, please raise your hand and we will get to you.
Thank you.
All right, I see no other hands of those wishing to speak. Again, tonight, because of our unusual circumstances, you see councilors wearing earbuds in the room just to avoid complications from audio feedback. I ask everybody who is participating to remain muted unless they are recognized to speak. Thank you. Moving on to our agenda for this evening, Paper 11,883, Mayor's Communication Number 34, Submitting the City's FY 2021 Municipal Spending Plan for July 2020. Without objection, we'll file the communication and move to Paper 11,883 and order authorizing the mayor under MGL Chapter 44, Section 32, to submit a continuing appropriation budget commencing July 1st, 2020 and ending July 31st, 2020. And I have a motion to adopt for discussion.
Move to adopt.
I think it was Counselor LaForest making the motion, Counselor Blackmore second. And again. Please mute. Mayor, I'm going to give you a few minutes to start and then we will fire questions at you.
Oh, wonderful. That sounds like a lot of fun. Do I have screen sharing, please?
You should now.
Thank you very much. So just a few brief items to set the stage for the discussion. What we are talking about is a continuing appropriation budget for the month of July. As we all know, oh, I misspelled overview. As we all know, the fiscal year begins in just a few hours on July 1st. As mentioned at the last finance committee meeting, the information we have from the Division of Local Services is that state aid distributions for at least the first two months of the fiscal year, July and August, will be based on our fiscal year 20 estimates. This includes both Chapter 70 and our unrestricted aid. Given that and the discussion we had at the finance committee, this makes the continuing appropriation budget the most appropriate scenario for the time being. As mentioned in the order, continuing appropriation is allowed per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32. It provides that if a budget isn't adopted by June 30th, we are able to present a spending plan to meet expenses for the month. We're allowed to do that for up to three months. And again, from the Division of Local Services, I think it's important to just note that there is no requirement that a continuing budget for any of those months be equal to 1/12 of the previous fiscal year's operating budget. Each continuing budget can provide for all expenses that may be incurred for that particular month. So it's a 1/12 in terms of time, not a 1/12 in terms of constant dollars. So that's the approach that we're, that we're taking, and we're looking at all of the expenses that we will be incurring for the month of July. Accordingly, you have in front of you a budget, rather, a continuing appropriation of $3,831,954, which funds July operations in all budget categories. This just reflects those categories as they are represented in the order and in the budget detail that was provided to the council. And just to talk about a couple of areas where things are not a pure 1/12, some critical ones. So our retirement contribution, which for the year is close to $3 million, for the month of July will be 512, almost $513,000. We requested from the retirement board and they granted us the ability to pay our annual assessment on an installment plan for the next six months, and they also agreed to waive the interest on that for now, bringing that, that cost down. On the other hand, we did fully pay our general insurance account in order to receive a 3% discount, and the 311,667 in the spending plan is reflective of that discount that we get for prepaying or fully paying. We have an annual support fee for our finance system. And then just four areas, just to give examples of places where the plan does not include any continuing appropriation for the month of July. Our next payment for the Housif Water Quality District is due in August, so that will be reflective in the next month's budgets. We have no anticipated cost for elections in July. We have no interest payments due in July, and we are really optimistic that there will be no anticipated spending against snow and ice in the, in the month of July. And, you know, we say that based on past history, but 2020 has showed us that a lot of things can go in an unexpected way, but those are the, those are the main items. And again, with, with that very brief overview, I'll turn off my screen and open it up to discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions from councilors? I have to both look at the screen and in the room, so, you know, wave if you feel like I'm not seeing. Questions from councilors? Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I just want to thank the mayor for that overview. I had sent some detailed information to the councilors the other day, and it basically was the same information showing you what the differences between the 1/12 budget that the mayor had submitted and actually taking, you know, fiscal year 2020, dividing it by 12, and showing those differences between those, between the mayor's budget and the actual 1/12 last year's budget. So there are some outliers, they're, they're explainable, certainly have to pay our retirement and our, our insurance, and if, if we have issues that we, we have to pay for some IT services on a yearly basis, totally understandable. So I just want to thank the mayor for summarizing that. However, I, I, I did have one question and one issue regarding the general government line, and that was specifically related to the tourism position. So in the month of July, the tourism position has been put to zero. So basically, we're not expecting any tourism events in, in the month of July. However, that position or that person in that position has been promoted to a position of fiscal and compliance officer in the community development office, which is a normally grant-funded department from the government whenever we receive grants, we also receive funding within those grants for administrative costs. So this is something that's, it's a pretty important department, and it's pretty important to make sure that we follow the guidelines within the federal government's guidelines of equal opportunity employment in order to hire people in that department. So it's my understanding that this person was hired with no posting or no public posting or advertising that a position was, was open. So my question is, is, are we an equal opportunity employer? And if we are, do these meet the guidelines of being an equal opportunity employer? I know that there was over 200 people recently laid off in the city of North Adams at Crane, and, and I'm wondering, there's, there's got to be some of them that are, are qualified for accounting positions within the city. So I'm, I'm just really concerned that these people didn't have the opportunity to apply for a position within the city that was not posted legally, and, and it was, was given to someone who, whose position is, is no longer available within, within the city of North Adams just due to the COVID circumstances. I'm, I'm just, it, it's very concerning. We should take the 3,000. There's an amount in, in community of $3,393. Now, that position hasn't been filled for a few months. Is it a position that we need for the month of July? I'm not saying it's, it's a position that we don't need in the future or a position that we don't need. However, is this the position that we need in July that we're willing to be susceptible to breaking the rules of being an equal opportunity employer? And, and possibly, you know, federal funding, federal grants in, in the future? You know, I, I know we have councilors here that are, are interested in making a, a working group on diversity. You know, this is part of diversity. This is part of letting the people be aware of the positions that are available in this, in, in the city of North Adams and the qualified people being able to apply for them. So, you know, I mean, if, if you're for diversity, I don't understand how you can, you, you can support not posting and advertising a position that's available in the city of North Adams.
Mayor, would you like to respond, or Counselor Blackmore had her hand up next?
I'll let Counselor Blackmore take it first.
I was going to suggest the mayor answer it, but I know that any of the things that we've been getting from the administration has been asking us to fill positions, to move people within the city to not, if we don't have to lay off people, to not lay them off, that you want to, there's other tasks or other jobs that they can do. I also, my understanding is this is a temporary reallocation of duties, not necessarily, it's not a permanent, it's not a permanent hire. Also, my experience has been that the city usually posts positions even if they, from within first and then outside. So I also think that, that obviously this compliance issue needs to, the compliance person, that's the name of the staff, is important right now because we're in the middle of, a lot of the COVID money is coming through community development block grants or the CARES Act. We need somebody that can work on that, and this person, as a temporary fill to keep our city employees employed, I think is important. So I guess that's it, and the mayor can address what the, whatever I, and I don't agree, but I don't think we need to cut the budget now.
Thank you.
No, again, this is, this is a temporary reassignment due to a vacancy in a position in order to keep necessary work happening. It is a person who is qualified to do the work, has been doing the work incredibly well, and, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I would also say, if we want to just talk about a budgetary lens for this, we, if we had either furloughed or laid off an individual, we would have had, you know, unemployment and benefit costs in the case of a furlough that we would continue to be responsible for, and if we had hired, we would have taken on additional benefit costs at that time. So there's a, there's a, you know, there's a fiscal responsibility piece of this, there's an operations management during, in a, during a state of emergency piece of this, and there is a, a, you know, qualification piece of this. And as Counselor Blackmore noted, there is, you know, there is work flowing through the Office of Community Development. We anticipate that within the week, if not within the next couple of days, we should be seeing an additional CDB allocation from our mini entitlement, which we intend to use for small business support, and there will be, there will be work associated with that for the fiscal and compliance position. So it is an important position for the city, it is an important position for the, for the month of July, and it is a temporary fill during this state of emergency.
Thank you. Further discussion? Looking at the screen, Counselor Moulton?
Grab mute.
I'm sorry, you look like you're still muted. Hang on.
My question to the mayor would be, was this advertised as a temporary position? And when this position is up, it will be re-advertised out there? I, I, I'm not familiar with the federal grant guidelines, if it has to be advertised. So at the end of this month, where, what happens to this position?
The position continues, how, you know, how long we, we hold it as temporary kind of depends on, on where we are with other, other parts of this, this state of emergency.
So the most it could go would be three months?
Presumably, but, but again, I can't speak, you know, I can't give it a specific date.
Thank you, Counselor Moulton. Further discussion? Counselor Harpen?
Okay, okay. So Counselor Blackmore mentioned that it's important to keep the city employees employed, and that's true. But isn't it important to, to keep other citizens employed that are just as qualified or who knows, more than qualified? You know, and I, I question whether if she's the best candidate, only because if she was the best candidate, why wouldn't she hire he or she or this person hired permanently? You know, it, it's a position that was open and it was not posted within the city and was not posted publicly. It was a position that was filled from, from a position that is, is no longer available. I, I, I understand your, your responsibility and your roles, but in fiscal responsibility, you know, fiscal responsibility, there's also a social responsibility. And, and lately, this, this whole council has been really concerned about social responsibility. And I'm hoping, I really, really do hope that this council understands what they're doing when they say that this is okay. It's okay for the mayor just to shuffle people around to jobs that are open and not post and not publicly advertise these positions to people that may be qualified and are unemployed. It's really, really upsetting that, that you would think that this is okay.
Counselor Blackmore? Further questions from the council? Counselor Bona?
Sort of off this mayor, the, because the, the person who's filling that position is, it was also the, the former or in a sense temporarily not filled tourism position, what will happen if an event is coming up that the, that the tourism director's position needs to put in some hours? Can the one person work both jobs or is that considered one of those, you can't work two separate jobs? I'm just curious how that, how that works. So, you know, if we know in a month, we need to start planning an event that might be three, four months away, I mean, we haven't discussed the parade yet, for example, and if that person needs to put in hours, is that allowed under the two positions under one, one employee?
Well, you know, we're looking at it from the position right now of current events. So for the month of July, our expectation is that we would not be working on, on events. So we don't anticipate that being an issue for this month. Yeah, if, if we, if we anticipated for August, that to be the case, we have, you know, we would, we would include for the Office of Tourism funding, and then we would allocate staff as appropriate.
Does that answer your question, Counselor? Okay. Counselor Harpen?
Okay, thank you. Just one more issue here that I'd like to address on fiscal responsibility that the mayor has so eloquently said that he's concerned about. This, this person, as the tourism director, currently on the compensation plan, has a grade of S-35. That annual salary is $39,378 within her, her, his or her grade level. The fiscal compliance officer is a grade seven or S-32. That position is $43,768. So that's a $4,000 jump annually. So the amount that you may be paying in unemployment is, is being spent additionally on, on the pay raise.
Thank you. Further discussion from councilors? We have a motion and a second to adopt the order. Seeing no further hands raised, call for a vote, and this is a majority vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand and I'll do a count. I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor. All those opposed? Two opposed, Counselors Harpen and Moulton? And the motion passes.
This is a roll call vote?
I'm sorry, I'm correct, it's a roll call. Madam clerk, if you would, do, do the honors.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
LaForest?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
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 Yes. And the motion carries. Thank you. Counselor Blackmore reminded me at the outset of the meeting that typically in a special meeting, we don't include all of the normal things, but they are on the agenda, so we will proceed through them. Any committee reports or minutes? Seeing none? There are no licenses before us? Mayor?
Not at this, at this time, other than, you know, to indicate that we will be back again presumably in a month unless we get clearer information. Ahead of that, at which point, we would get back to a budget resubmission and review of budget with, with finance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Liaison updates or councilors' concerns? Counselor Harpen and then Counselor Bona?
Yes, I'm concerned, I recently read two articles, one in the Berkshire Eagle and one in the Berkshire Edge, that a few councilors here are in a group, I'm not sure how big this group is or what, what's involved in them, but they are considering or actually moving forward with a merril on the high rise in North Adams, which is six stories high, which is huge. This is going to be, really make an impact on the city of North Adams. Nowhere in these articles did I see one approval of a board or one consideration of, of having a community meeting or even recognizing the people and the residents in the high rise or neighbors. So it's rather concerning that a small group of people can just go ahead and get permission or just paint, get a merril of such enormous factor and, and affecting the city of North Adams in such a major way with no approvals or no, no community input whatsoever. It's very concerning.
Thank you. Other counselor concerns? Counselor Bona, sorry.
Mayor, and it's probably still too early, but I know that, like, the Biggie was just canceled. Do we have any idea what might be happening with the fall foliage events at this time?
Uh, no clear idea. We've had a couple of, I've had a couple of chats with One Berkshire about it, and we had agreed to talk in early, early July to review where we were.
Thank you. And Counselor Lamb?
Uh, yes, I'll address the concern that Counselor Harpen raised. So, you know, just to clarify, much like with any press, it doesn't necessarily cover all the details when they, they publish an article. So yes, it is indeed a fact that myself, Counselor Sweeney, and several other community members and organizations have been involved in a project that was, in a way, a continuation of the Eagle Street Initiative, but it was moving towards Ashland Street and trying to add some aesthetic contributions and pedestrian friendly improvements in that corridor. We fundraised last year back in the spring of 2019, and we received a matching grant from Mass Development. That program, as we were going through it, we had not identified the specific location of the mural at that point. Over the, over the course of the past year, it was brought to the leadership of the Housing Authority, and that was prior to her, the, I believe she's still current director's illness, which she hasn't been as involved recently. All that is to say, that is, that was an initial, you know, discussion with that board, at which point we moved forward with seeking out an artist. That does not mean that that is signed, sealed, and delivered. The artist needs to come up with a design, and that design is being directly informed, actually. We did have paper surveys dropped with every resident in the building or in the complex, so there was 180 surveys distributed. We've begun to receive those, so those are starting to come in, which is giving information that will be provided to the artist to come up with a draft of what the work will look like, which will then go before the full board for the Housing Authority, as well as being approved by HUD. And we will also be presenting it to the Public Art Commission, just so they are aware of the design features, even though it doesn't necessarily fall within their full jurisdiction. So it's more of a presentation as part of the greater landscape of art in the community. So, you know, to those concerns raised, you know, I can appreciate that wanting community involvement, and that has been one of the core pieces since we identified an artist that is of a caliber that could bring some really interesting art in line with similar works done last year as part of the O Positive Festival. So it's, it's still early, like, you know, it's not, again, signed, sealed, and delivered what it looks like, what it's going to be like, and the approvals are all being on paper, so there's a lot of work ahead of the group, and I just wanted to identify that as some points of clarification.
Thank you. Other councillor concerns? Councilor Moulton? Councilor, you'll need to unmute again, sorry.
Sorry. The first thing I thought about that was today, and again, I'm all for art, like I remember a couple of years ago, going to many meetings on the
Excuse me, Councilor Moulton, just a minute. What's the point of order, Councilor La Forest?
The point of order is that we now have three councilors talking on an item that is not on the agenda, and I believe that if we're going to continue this conversation, it should be added to the next meeting, the agenda for the next meeting.
Agreed. Councilor Moulton will have to proceed in that direction. Thank you. Any last words from councilors? And then we will make available some time for attendees if they wish to say a word or two. Councilor Harpen?
Yeah, I hope we clarify what the councillor concerns are, because if we have councillor concerns, they, and we address them, it seems like we're not allowed to talk about them. So it's, it's, it's a little we have a schedule and an agenda with councillor concerns, but when we mention the councillor concerns, they're not in there. You could certainly talk about it and put it on the agenda as well.
I'm sorry, councilors should be able to share any concerns that they have during councillor's concerns, but now there is a back and forth, which is deliberation, and that's, that should be an agenda item rather than under the umbrella of individual councillor's concern.
I have to agree with Councilor La Forest. Councilor Lamb?
Different topic. Prior conversation. Just wanted to note that there's been a number of conversations, both on social media and otherwise, around outdoor dining and outdoor retail opportunities for downtown businesses. I just wanted to note that we'll have a likely, I'm requesting a brief presentation. I know that our next meeting is incredibly packed, but I think it's important that the council have an update on what that is from the mayor's office, so I'm just asking that the mayor and community development office please give a briefing on any activity that they've taken or planned activity around that for the downtown, since our next meeting is not until July 14th, I believe, but that feels like an important thing to touch base on.
Thank you. Councilor Wilkinson, will you need to unmute?
I'm Lauren. In any event, I just, my only comment is that even though we don't have all the councilors on board yet, it's nice being back in council chambers, even under these strange circumstances. I'm certainly not a big Zoom fan, only because I'm a dinosaur, but in any event, feels good to be sitting back in my council chair. Thank you.
And it's great to see you in person. Councilor Blackmer, did you have your hand raised a moment ago? No? Any other hands? Councilor Harpen?
Yeah, just one more concern, the chair to the mayor regarding picnic tables up at the lake. Is there ever, are those going to return to the lake anytime soon? Also, it seems like the bathrooms are open kind of sporadically. Sometimes they're open, sometimes they're not. So is there any schedule as far as Windsor Lake goes, as far as having picnic tables? I think it's a good social recreational area that, that citizens can use during the time of the pandemic when, you know, some people might not feel safe, you know, spending time indoors. So I just think it's important that we provide some, at least a little bit of comfort, possibly a, you know, a picnic table for, for the citizens of North Adams.
I can't speak to the specifics of the bathroom issue, but we can look into that. As far as picnic tables, we're really following the outdoor recreation guidance right now as far as the expectation that tables be sanitized after every use, and because we don't have anybody up there doing that, we are holding until we see what the guidance for the next phase of the reopening plan looks like.
Terrific, thank you.
I would just mention that they're at all the state parks.
Okay.
Thanks. Any last words? I see a few attendees in the room. If you would like two minutes to speak, please raise your hand. Not seeing any hands raised. In that case, motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everybody. You have a good night. See you in two weeks.